In session. Motion been made by Birch, properly settled by Dusa, any discussion? All in favor of the said motion, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, and it is unanimous. All right, at this time, we do have some public comment for this evening. So I will read the board chair's statement concerning public comment at our school board meetings. And it reads, "The public participation section of the school board meeting is designed to hear comments from the public, but is limited to thirty minutes so that normal business can be conducted. During this portion of the meeting, board members will listen to concerns and comments, but will not answer questions or debate issues. Each participant will be limited to five minutes and will refrain from making personal complaints about school personnel or board members." So, at this time, we'll invite Mr. Michael LaSette to the podium. Good to have you with us tonight, sir.
Hi, my name is Michael LaSette from Queen City News and Charlotte Sports Live. This is Dr. Anderson, you Mr. Vic. I've been talking with Central High School last couple of weeks. Their track and field team continues to be competitive. They're in states once again this year. It's been ten years since they won a state championship, and they've continued to do this without a actual track and field to work on. I know there's concern and frustration among them, and they've asked questions that I feel have gone unanswered. And I was just kind of wondering, has there been any plans to build them a track? And as a follow-up to that, I know a couple of years ago, UPS apparently agreed to help them, and that never went anywhere. And I was wondering for clarification on what happened with that, if it's possible.
Okay, all right, appreciate it, thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to have a moment of silence. And as we have this moment of silence, I'd ask you to remember the family of our Long Middle School student who passed away last week. So let's take a few moments, a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. And certainly, our thoughts and prayers are with the family of our Long Middle School administration and staff, as well as those families as well. All right, at this time, we're going to invite to the podium Ms. Kiara Hicks, a student at Mackby High School, who's going to lead us in our pledge. So if we'd all stand for our pledge, she's going to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Hicks, we certainly thank you for coming and joining us at our meeting and leading us in our pledge tonight. Thank you so much. We do want to take a few moments and welcome all of our visitors. It's good to see a packed house here tonight. Certainly welcome you to your school board meeting tonight. Good to see our SRO looking, there we go, in the building. Good to have you with us, administrators, parents, students, the Link Newspaper, Queen City News. We certainly welcome each one of you to our meeting this evening. Board members, you've been given the minutes for the 4/22/24 meeting. Hear no objection, they'll be deemed approved by consent. And they are approved. All right, and I know why a lot of you are here, because we have a lot of special recognitions tonight. And so that's always, May is always a good meeting for us, because it is the time of the year that we get to recognize a lot of our students across the district. And so we certainly are excited to have you here and excited about the following folks that we're going to be recognizing. So I'm going to kind of give a rundown of ten special recognitions, and then we'll meet down at the podium, Dr. Anderson and I. So tonight, we're going to be recognizing the superintendents. We have four students for the superintendent's art award. So Mr. McGuire will be, Mrs. McGuire, excuse me, will be meeting us at the podium to present those in just a few moments. We also are going to be recognizing a student receiving a SCADA scholarship. Ms. Middleton will be helping recognize that student tonight. Also, our athletic players of the year. We're excited about looking and introducing you to the school-level athletes of the year, as well as recognizing our district athlete of the year. And Dr. King will do that when we get down to that section. Also, we'd like to recognize our talented CTE students, our career and technical education students who went to SE Skills USA competition. And so we're excited, Dr. Hale is going to recognize those for us tonight. And then lastly, but not lastly, we're going to also recognize thirty-four NETC graduates from our four high school and four USCL graduates from Sherawah High School who have been working hard to earn dual enrollment degrees. So we're excited about that tonight. So Dr. Anderson and I are going to meet you at the podium and recognize these students.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Anderson, members of the board, good evening. I had the distinct pleasure of presenting the superintendent art awards this evening to four very talented students. Each school in our district submitted one piece of art for primary grades K through second, elementary grades three through five, middle grades, and high school. These pieces were adjudicated by a panel of judges and winners were selected. It was a tough decision, as there were so many amazing pieces. And the pieces chosen as superintendent art award winners will be on display in the district office for two years, I believe. Tonight, I would like to recognize the following students. If you'll please come to the front when your name is called to be recognized and remain at the front for photos. Our first winner in the primary category is Channing Freeman from Edwards Elementary School, art teacher Mr. Darren Fields. In the elementary category, Zaraya Coats from Ruby Elementary School, art teacher Ms. Triva Davis. In the middle school category, Carmen Creach from Long Middle School, art teacher Mrs. Katie Stewart. In the high school category, Ava Tiller from Mackby High School, art teacher Mrs. Tracy Medley. Ava Tiller couldn't be with us tonight, because in addition to being an amazing artist, she is also an amazing softball player and is in Louisville this evening. We encourage you all to take a moment this evening to view each of the winning pieces on display, and congratulations to all of our winners.
Good evening, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. On behalf of the Office of Federal Programs, it is my privilege to congratulate Ms. Kiara Hicks, who is a senior from Mackby High School, who was selected to receive a $1,000 scholarship from the South Carolina Association of Title One Administrators, also known as SCADA. Kiara plans to attend Winthrop University as a teaching fellow in the fall to study biology education. She's been, yeah, she's been an active member of the Spirit of Mackby Marching Band and a color guard captain. And she's also an honor roll student, member of Beta and the National Technical Honor Society. Please join me in congratulating Kiara on this great accomplishment.
Good evening, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Chairman, and board members. Each year, we recognize outstanding athletic performance from each high school. Each high school nominates one female and one male athlete that has proven to be an extraordinary athlete at their school. The athletes must be in grades ten through twelve. They must participate in competitive athletics during the year nominated. Multiple-sport athletics or athletes, excuse me, receive more consideration, and they must remain in good academic and disciplinary standing. We want to thank Dean Sanders from Pepsi-Cola of Bennettsville for sponsoring this event again this year. At this time, we will have each school recognize their respected winners. Please stay standing with your awards, so we can take a group picture of all of our winners. So first up, we would have Mr. Mitch Leard, the A.D. from Central High School.
Good evening, Dr. Anderson, entire school board. It's my pleasure to present the athletes of the year from Central High School. I'll begin with our female athlete or player of the year. She is a three-sport athlete, volleyball, basketball, and softball. She's only in the 10th grade, so there's really, really, really big things to come the next two years. But if you get a chance to come by Central High School and watch us play any of those three sports, you will be amazed at the athletic ability that this sophomore, Ms. Tasia Quick, possesses. Tasia, if you'll come to the front, and while you're doing so, I'm going to read a quote from one of your softball coaches, Ms. Kim Mangum. "Tasia is very deserving of this award. She is a very gifted athlete, but what makes her special is her determination and hustle. She gives 110% every time she hits the floor or the field. I've had the pleasure of coaching her since she started rec ball in Jefferson and have watched her grow as a person and athlete. She is a very coachable kid who always gives her all and constantly pushes herself to be better. In fact, she sometimes pushes herself too hard. She's also a great team player who cheers for each of her teammates and pushes them to succeed as well. It is fun to watch her play any sport, and I know she'll continue to improve with each passing season. She's also a genuinely good person. I'm so proud of Tasia, and I expect great things from her in the future. Congratulations, Tay. I love you, and I'm proud of you." One of our softball coaches, Kim Mangum, had those comments. Congratulations, Tay. Our male player of the year, if I talked about all of his accomplishments, I would be up here way too long, and I know you guys don't want to listen to me talk that long. But David Oliver is a senior at Central High School, and he has already signed full scholarship to play golf at Furman University. He just came off the golf course, I got the text at 5:05 that he was leaving Sherawah State Park. And he said, "Coach, I'm going to make it on time," and he did. And he shot a 72 today, awesome, awesome score again. Guys, David is ranked third in our senior class. He has a GPA of 5.137, Beta Club, Mu Alpha Theta Student Council, Academic Team, member of Pageville First Baptist Church Youth. He's the captain of our Fellowship of Christian Athletes, the group we have at Central. Five-time All-Region in golf, three-time All-State. I can go on and on and on. But David Oliver is one of the most deserving athletes that I've ever presented in my ten years here at Central High School. Let me read the quote from our district teacher of the year, Ms. Jennifer Dillon. "David is a diamond. Diamonds are created by pressure. Over the last four years that David has been at Central High School, he has built a reputation as a diamond. He is a student who shines. David is a prime example of a student athlete. He is deserving of all honors and recognition coming his way. Yet he is the type of person who achieves greatness not for the honor and recognition, but for the sheer joy of competing and bettering himself. It is evident that he will be successful in all that he endeavors to do. In the classroom, he is an accomplished learner. On the golf course, he is stellar. From duties with the football team, being FCA's captain, and leading our golf team, he has learned to balance time and adjust priorities. The pressure he has faced through practices and matches for Central High School has resulted in him graduating a diamond. Congratulations to you, David. Continue to shine," for Ms. Jennifer Dillon.
Next, we have Mr. David Byrd, the A.D. with Sherawah High School.
Dr. Anderson, Dr. King, board, appreciate the opportunity of what you do in recognizing our student athletes. Our first, and I will concur with Coach Leard, David, those tees were back today, right? And he still shot 72 and made it here on time. Seen him play, tremendous player, pleasure to watch him play. Our first player of the year, we'll start out with our female player of the year, senior Eva Goddard. I'll have her come forward at this time. Her father Craig and mother Gina are here today with us. Glad to have you with us. Eva has participated in cheer golf and for four years soccer. Can't say enough about this young lady. Salutatory of the class of 2024, GPA of 5.26, contested in the 2024 Miss Braves Scholarship Pageant, Beta member from 2021 to 2024, National Technical Honor Society. She's going to be continuing her education at Virginia Tech, majoring in pre-vet with plans to be a veterinarian. So we can imagine that. But one of the teachers there says Eva is a lovely young lady with a bright, bright future. And I could echo those sentiments. She has been the perfect student athlete that you could ask for at Sherawah High School. Appreciate her and her parents and the support that they've given us in this district. But what a tremendous student athlete. Can't say enough good things about her. And a tremendous role model for a lot of our young ladies to look up in the Sherawah area for what Eva's done at our school. Congratulations, Eva. Our next award is for our male player of the year. He's also a senior. Could get Dwight Harrington to come forward this time. Not going to get a lot out of Dwight talking now, I'll tell you that. But I will tell you this, a tremendous, tremendous athlete for us. His mother, Latoya Harrington, I think some family members here with us today. Glad to have her with us, appreciate her support. Dwight, football, basketball, and a few years with track. A tremendous athlete, a huge amount of awards that he's won at Sherawah High School, but extremely impressed with the way that he carries himself. A tremendous role model for our students and friends there at Sherawah High School. Has a GPA of 2.94, has been All-Region in basketball. Player of the Year this year in football for us, 2024 MVP for our football program, and numerous other awards that he's won while at Sherawah High School and his participation with football and basketball. One of Dwight's English teachers actually said this, Ms. Bregman, "Dwight is a wonderful student. He is quiet and unassuming, but he is always ready to help and support his classmates." I can tell you this, after having this young man for four years, extremely quiet. But I'll tell you this, when he steps on the lines or steps on the court, it changes dramatically. And we will miss him extremely, but it's been a pleasure to see him develop into the young man that he has. Dwight will also have numerous opportunities to play at a variety of schools, but is signed to play football at North Greenville next year. So we're excited about the opportunity, whether he lands up on, lands on offense or defense as a receiver or defensive back or safety. But can't say enough of great things about this young man and his family. And he will be missed greatly at Sherawah High School. But this time, I'd like to congratulate Dwight Harrington, our male player of the year.
Next up, we have Coach Kenny, the A.D. from Chesterfield High School.
Dr. Anderson, board, thank you very much for being here, recognizing these athletes. Our female athlete of the year, I'd like to bring her up, Kaylee Eubanks. Come on, Kaylee. You're never shy before, don't be shy now. Kaylee is a junior, and her family in attendance, her mother Katie Eubanks, stepfather Joel Hargrove, her grandparents, Tim and Sharon Eubanks, her great-grandfather Ray Robertson, and her uncle Tommy Eubanks are all here to see her tonight. Kaylee is a two-sport athlete, basketball and softball. Her accomplishments, 2023 All-PD Team for softball, 2023 All-Region, 2024 All-Region, 2024 All-State Team, Team MVP, Team Offensive Player of the Year. She is a member of last year's 2023 State Championship softball team at Chesterfield. She was selected as an MSP All-American, and she will represent in Orlando with only 25 players selected nationwide in the class of 2025. And Kaylee has committed to Syracuse University to play softball as a junior. So other activities that she is in is she's a member of Providence Baptist Church and Youth Group, volunteers with Jefferson Rec Leagues, giving lessons of coaching, Phi Theta Kappa member, student body vice president 2023. She was just selected last week to be the student body president for 2024-25. Beta Club member, president's list every semester with dual enrollment at NETC, and she carries a 4.650 GPA. And her quote from her basketball coach, Coach Nick Jolly, "Kaylee is a critical piece and key contributor to any and every team she's a part of. Her intensity and energy is infectious to all of her teammates on and off the court or the field. Her energy and lighthearted spirit keep the energy positive in critical situations. As good of an athlete as she is, she's an even better person." And every single athlete up here, we can read everything else, I want to add a little personal touch to it. The one thing that I noticed about Kaylee the three years I've been here is her sports IQ. She plays basketball, she plays softball, and her sports IQ is off the charts. And if you've coached ever before, you know that that is, that's not coached. That is something that just is instinctive. And she has, even though basketball isn't her best sport, softball is, we know this, but the play she makes on the basketball court instinctively is just incredible. So she makes plays that do not show up in the box score. And one thing I wish she would listen is, I tell Kaylee all the time, although softball's her main sport, I've tried to teach her how to shoot, and if she would listen to me, she'd probably average more points than basketball this year. And we've had this argument over and over, and hopefully next year, senior year, she will. But she is our nominee, and she is just a fantastic person, and doesn't get any better than that. Our male athlete is Kenick Low. Kenick is here with his parents Bren and Melinda Low and his five biggest supporters, sisters Amri, Kinsley, Bria, Kennedy, and London. Kenick is a four-year cross-country letterman, four years track, three years cross-country. He's also a senior. He was captain of the cross-country team, All-Region Cross-Country 2023, 2020, and through 2023. He won first place in the Region Cross-Country Tournament this year, and he was also All-Region Track with a 3.60 GPA. In the community, he's a volunteer star coach, completed four years of early morning church seminary study, four years youth leader in his church. Kenick will be going on a two-year mission trip after graduation. So he's had some offers to go run, but he chose he's going on this mission trip. And I asked him before we came in, does he know yet? He still doesn't know where he's going, so, but a very, very admirable young man. Teacher from his, comment from Ms. Stansel, his English teacher, "As Kenick's teacher, I've had the privilege of witnessing his journey as a student athlete. Kenick not only demonstrates exceptional talent on the field, but also carries himself with respect and integrity in the classroom. His commitment to academic excellence and sportsmanship sets a standard for his peers, showcasing the importance of balanced discipline and respect in both academics and athletics. Kenick's commitment to hard work and positive attitude serve as an outstanding example for all aspiring student athletes." And once again, another personal touch with Kenick is, if you've been in coaching, you know people say coaches influence kids all the time. It's coach speak, you know, if they do that, very rarely does a kid come along that influences the coaches. And Kenick is one of these athletes, unanimous choice. I mean, our coaches vote for the athletes of the year, and it was everybody automatically, you know, male athlete of the year, Kenick Low. And so he influences the coaches, influences how we coach, influences how we conduct themselves. And it just, I mean, outstanding young man. And so we're very, very fortunate. And, you know, I'm sure when Kenick goes on his mission trip, he will do great things and help great people to be successful. So we appreciate everything Kenick does for Chesterfield, both of them, Kaylee and Kenick. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Andy Carter, the A.D. at Mackby High School.
Good evening, Dr. Anderson, board members. Thank you for having me this evening. The first individual that I would like to talk about is our female athlete of the year, Diana Williams. And she's here with, being supported tonight by her mother. So she's always at every athletic event supporting Diana, great support system. Diana is a four-sport athlete for us. She does volleyball, cheer, basketball, and track. Diana is probably the most competitive female I've ever been around. So it's amazing to me that she's up here and that we do this as a county. This is my first year in county, so I actually love that we're honoring kids at every school for this. A little bit about Diana, she's involved in numerous clubs at Mackby. Clubs include FCA, Senior Beta Club, and Leo's Club. She has a GPA of 4.769, is ranked 10th in her class. She's been a five-year varsity letterman. She was an All-Region selection for volleyball and basketball and is expected to be one for track this year as well. She has been, or she was selected as an All-State selection for volleyball, basketball, and is expected again to receive that in track this year. This season, she surpassed the 1,000 career points in basketball, which that in itself is extremely impressive at the high school level. She is a dual-enrollment student at NETC and has made the president's deans list. She's also a health science completer. Outside of this, outside of school, she is active in Cedar Creek Baptist Church, the Sand Hill Blazers Volleyball Club, and the Brenda Cranford School of Dance. Just real quick, personal note for me, I get to see Diana every single day, go through the gym, go to weightlifting, and I don't think I've ever seen her not have a smile on her face. So she truly believes in what she does, she enjoys what she does, and she is exactly what we expect our students at Mackby that play sports to be on a daily basis. Her volleyball coach wrote a letter of recommendation for her, so I took an excerpt out of that, because I thought it was really, hit the nail on the head. I'm not the type of person to write a letter of recommendation for a person that I wouldn't stake my reputation on. Diana Williams is that type of person. She has a heart for helping others, an unbreakable will that allows her to accomplish any task set before her, and a passion for life and athletics that is becoming harder and harder to find in today's youth. She is the perfect role model for young girls in Chesterfield County to look up to and inspire to emulate. Congratulations, Diana. Our Male Athlete of the Year is Senior Willie William King. I hadn't seen Willie here tonight. Willie is a four-sport, or three-sport athlete, I'm sorry. He does football, he travels to Chesterfield to wrestle, and he is part of our powerlifting team that we have for our guys. Willie's involved in numerous activities at Mackey. He's part of the Senior Beta Club, the National Technical Honor Society, Leo Clubs, and FFA. He has a 4.365 GPA and is ranked 17th in his class. He's an agricultural completer. He's a four-year varsity letterman, All-Region for football, and was an All-State selection this year. He wrestled at Chesterfield for at least two seasons, and he has paved the way for what Mackey powerlifting is going to be in the future. He, he bent, or squats over 500 pounds, he benches over 350 pounds, deadlifts 450 pounds. To see him, he, he's built like a little tank, and he loves, he loves working out. They had Decision Day for all our seniors, and Willie skipped Decision Day to go to the weight room and work out. So we had to pull him out of the weight room so he could go get recognized for his Decision Day. But that's the kind of kid that he is. One of his football coaches wrote that William is an amazing young man. He's, he not only represents what student athletes should be, but what a true leader should be. He's a high-character young man that does not shy away from hard work and is dedicated to making himself and all those around him the best versions of themselves. I'm extremely honored to have the opportunity to coach and work with this young man, and he is the standard for what we hope all of our Mackey High School student athletes strive to become. Congratulations to William King.
Congratulations to each of our student athletes. Let's give them another round of applause. Once each school votes on their Player of the Year, our Athletic Directors meet and vote for one female and one male overall district winner to be the Chesterfield County School District Pepsi-Cola of Benningsville Athletic Player of the Year. This year's Female Chesterfield County School District Pepsi-Cola of Benningsville Athletic Player of the Year is Ms. Kaylee Eubanks from Chesterfield High School. This year's Male Chesterfield County School District Pepsi-Cola of Benningsville Athletic Player of the Year is Mr. David Oliver from Central High School.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson and Mr. Chair. All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Anderson, tonight, we want to commend several of our CTE skills programs, namely Building Construction, Electricity, Mechatronics, and Law Enforcement Programs at both Central High School and Chesterfield High School. So we're going to start with the Building Construction Program at Central High School on the direction of Mr. Robert Horton. Mr. Horton, will you come up here as well, please? Okay. And then I'll call the names of your kids, all right? So these students came in third place for teamwork at South Carolina Skills USA. So please come forward as I call your name. Louis Ortiz, Juan Cribera Solis, and Juan Manuel Navarro. Thank you, gentlemen. Next, we have our Law Enforcement Program at Chesterfield High School on the direction of Mr. Richard Karnes, if you'll make your way up here. Mr. Karnes, students came in second place for Crime Scene Investigation at South Carolina Skills USA. So next time we need some help with that, we'll, we'll call them, all right? So please come forward as I call your name. Hazy Dimby, Michaela Lizenby, and Carson McCollum. All right, we're going to return back to Central High School, where one student in the Electricity Program on the direction of Instructor Mr. Tremell Hare is our first-place winner. Mr. Hare, if you'll come on up. Mr. Sebastian Resendez placed first in Electricity, and will be heading to Atlanta, Georgia next month, June 25th through the 28th, to compete in the National Skills USA Competition. Please give him a good round. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. And last, and certainly not least, we have a team of girls under the direction of Instructor Mr. Jeff Spencer, if he'll make his way up. They were first-place winners in Mechatronics. Mechatronics is taught at Chesterfield High School under the direction of Mr. Jeff Spencer, and they too will make the trip to Atlanta, Georgia next month, to compete in the National Skills USA Competition. Please come forward. Ms. Ally Brown and Ms. Savannah Gunner. And both of these ladies will be, will be back next year too, so wait and see. Thank you. Oh, okay. All right. All right. So the next thing we're going, we're going to move to is our students that have earned credit toward high school and college while still in high school, or either an associate's degree in science or in arts. However, two students actually earned both Associate in Arts and Associate in Science, and I'll get to that in just a minute. So please come forward as I call your name. All right, I'm not sure if all of these are here, but Central High School, Jada Ratliff. No? Okay. She had an Associate in Arts and the Associate in Science. Sherrell High School, Michaela Ellerby, please come forward, an Associate in Arts from Northeastern Technical College. Evangeline Goddard, Associate in Science. And Karma McGwin, Associate in Science. Okay, thank you. All right. Now, Chesterfield High School, Alyssa Burgess, Associate in Arts. Riley St. Clair, Associate in Arts. Very good. Serenity Jenkins, Associate in Science. Finley Stevens, Associate in Science. Kaylee Wood, there you go. Kaylee Wood, Associate in Science. Jasmine Ochoa, Associate in Science. Riley Allen, Associate in Arts. Congratulations. Get those pictures, Mom. So now we're moving on to Mackey High School. Morgan Griggs, Associate in Arts. Molly Rollins, Associate in Arts. And Kylie Sawyer, Associate in Arts from Mackey. All right. Congratulations. Also, from Sherrell High School, we have four USC Lancaster graduates. They have earned credit toward high school and college while still in high school with either an Associate in Science or an Associate in Arts. So we have Aleah Jokaya Hannibal, Elizabeth Adele Midgley, and by the way, Aleah had an Associate in Arts and Associate in Science. Jaslyn Siney McClendon, Associate in Science. And Ivy Alexis Thomas, Associate in Science. All of these are from USC Lancaster. Okay, our next group of students, 20 in number, have earned 16 hours or more to complete a certificate at NETC, which allows them to apply the certification and the credits they earn toward additional credentials. Students can actually build off that certificate to reach an associate's degree. Please come forward as I call your name. From Central High School, Justice Gingham, Building Construction. Byron McManus, Building Construction. Harrison Outlaw, Building Construction. Kenzie Mangum, Intro to University Studies. Kayla Darby, Intro to University Studies and a University Studies Certificate. Haley Thomas, Intro to University Studies, University Studies Cert. And Jordan Coleman, Intro to University Studies. Congratulations. Okay, let's move to Sherrell High School. Amaya Ellerby, Intro to University Studies. That was the only, there, there you are, yay! All right, Chesterfield High School is next. Iron Myers, Intro to University Studies. Dawson Wallace, Intro to University Studies. Raiden Rivers, Intro to University Studies, and Bailey Cato, University Studies. All right. Okay, so next we'll have Mackey High School. Austin Smith, Intro to Uni, all of these are University Studies, okay? Caitlin Moody, Shabam Patel, Ava Tiller, Cameron Tiller, Delaney Cross, Trinity Big Rigman, and Landon Rhodes. All right, okay. In their absence, we'll give them some applause.
All right, so on behalf of the Chesterfield County School, we want to certainly congratulate each of the categories that we're giving away tonight. And as your prize, we're going to take a five-minute recess, because I know you'd like to slip out of here. So we're going to take a five-minute recess and let board members come out and look at some of this artwork, but congratulations. Kaski, our CFO, for our March financial review. We've got to talk about the auditor and also look at our general fund budget first reading.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Anderson, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
Prior to this evening, you all received a copy of the March financial review. Any questions as it relates to that report?
Any questions?
Here none.
All right. So next, in March of this year, our auditors, our financial auditors, Darva Kelly LLC, made the decision to dissolve their practice, and so we need to, they're no longer going to be performing our financial audit, so we need to select a new auditor with the fiscal year coming to close this June. After careful consideration, it's our recommendation that we engage Malden Jenkins LLC to perform our upcoming financial audit, and we also request board approval to renew that engagement each year for a total of five years in order to receive their lowest price for those services.
Okay, entertain a motion. Motion been made by Dusa, properly seconded by Ms. Birch. Any discussion? All in favor of the said motion, let me almost say an aye. All opposed, nay. And it is unanimous. Thank you, sir.
All right. Next, we're going to move on to the first reading of the general fund budget for the year 24-25. If we can get the presentation up there, just one second. A little technical difficulty, apologize. All right, here we go. I believe Dr. Anderson is going to want to start us off with the first part. Go ahead. All right. Let me run through here, trying to get to my portion. This was all presented at the last meeting on April 22nd. This relates to the data that kind of supports all the decisions that went into all the decisions we made.
And you can move to the budget part.
Skipping on. All right. So for the state budget update, so this past week, the House met and passed the House Two version of the new 24-25 state budget. We got some good news and some bad news as it relates to that. They did add back that $30 million to that budget line that the Senate took away, so that'll be debated in conference committee coming up over the next few weeks. The good news there is that we do have an opportunity for our general fund budget to increase, the revenue portion at least, but that does mean that we probably won't have those final projections until sometime mid-June. So we're going to have to continue on in our budgeting process. It'd be my recommendation that we move on with the Senate numbers. That gives us the most conservative estimate, and that way we know our revenue shouldn't really do anything but go up if anything changes. So we do have some new mandated expenditures, as we discussed last time. We have the increase to the minimum teacher salary schedules. We have the mandated annual step. The 11.8% increase in employer health insurance costs. And the 2.75 increase to state minimum bus salary scales. So our first pillar that we talked about last time was employee support. And the things that we're going to address this year's budget related to employee support are pay increase for our teachers and non-teachers. Our New Heights Middle School stipends. A bonus program for all employees. And a pay increase for speech-language pathologists. We additionally had some salary study recommendations that we reviewed last time. Those are the bus driver pay increase, the food service and custodian pay increase, a pay increase for substitutes, and the creation of the specialist pay schedule. The first one of those is the teacher pay increase. That is addressed with the new state mandated minimum salary scales, the annual state mandated step increase, and our additional local contribution on top of that. So I wanted to kind of go through, we talked about this slide last time as well, I wanted to go back through it again, just so we make sure everybody's on the same page. This chart that you're looking at right now represents the change in our current salary scales that the new state minimum scales would require. So if you look here in that top right, you see those scales that are the bachelors, the bachelors plus eighteen, specifically as it relates to those earlier scales, the zero through six years of experience, those are going to be hit more heavily with the new state mandated salary scales. Whereas you look at our masters thirty, our doctorate scales, and those really aren't addressed at all. So what we did is we identified some funds that we could put with our local contribution to make the scales look something more like this. With this proposal, every scale, excuse me, every cell on the salary scales would increase by a minimum of $500. Now, you're still going to see those higher increases on the bachelors, bachelors eighteen in those earlier cells, but this would make it a little more equitable across the board. Next, we have our pay increases for non-teachers. We do recommend a step increase for all employees, that includes teachers and non-teachers. And then we are presenting a cost of living adjustment to all non-teacher salary schedules that would not be impacted by the state minimum. We are recommending stipends for all employees at New Heights Middle School. As I said before, we are recommending a budgeted employee bonus program. In prior years, we have given employee bonuses, but there has never been one included in the general fund budget. And lastly, we have that pay increase for speech-language pathologists. Now on to the salary study recommendations. The first of which is the bus driver pay increase. We are recommending a 10% increase to every single scale on the bus driver pay schedule. Additionally, we are recommending a 10% increase to each cell of the food service and custodian pay schedules. We are recommending a $5 daily rate increase to each category of the substitute teacher pay scales. And we are recommending the establishment of a specialist salary category. The next pillar that we discussed last time was student success. The two areas that we're going to address as it relates to that pillar are adding a character education curriculum, as well as providing some much-needed math professional development. This is an area of need across our district, and we believe that investing in our teachers is the best way to get the best results out of our students. The third pillar that we talked about last time was school safety and stakeholder communication. The areas that we're going to address as it relates to those are providing financial incentives for fight reduction in high schools and middle schools. Providing an additional floating resource officer. The implementation of student IDs for all middle and high school students. And the addition of a full-time public information officer. So we can see that total cost will be $8,400 for the fight incentives. Those would be for schools that each quarter presented no fights at their school. And as I mentioned before, the additional school resource officer, that would be a floating resource officer that would not be assigned to any one school, but be available to essentially substitute in an area, or if we needed, just had a higher need in a particular area on a given day, that could cover that area.
But that resource officer's homeschool would be here at Permal Learning Center.
Yes. We also, like I said before, are recommending an implementation of student IDs. And the full-time public information officer. We do have a couple of mandated increases to our daily operations costs. Like I said before, that 11.8% increase to employer health insurance, as well as an increase to repair and maintenance budget to account for some of that ESR cost that's going to be coming back on as some of that deferred maintenance that was paid for with ESR before, we're going to have to reabsorb that. We are also recommending the absorption of all ESR-related expenditures into the general fund this year. And now we can get back to the actual numbers. This is going to be exactly the same as I presented last time, with the exception of that first line, that state lump sum for the proviso 1.3. Those Senate projections, like I mentioned last time, did decrease by about $200,000, and that's related to the $30 million that I discussed earlier. Hopefully, we're going to get some portion of that back. That'll be decided in conference committee. But our total general fund revenue that you can see down there is projected at $74,314,745. Our proposed expenditure budget, this one additionally is the same as I presented last time, with the exception of the increase of the dual-enrollment budget. We talked about that last time. Mr. Coleman, or Dr. Coleman, mentioned about that $150,000 number that had been approved. I went ahead and put that into the budget, so it can be, just so we can see it there. But the total expenditure budget for next year is looking like $76,417,836. Those two numbers will result in a projected fund balance needed to balance the budget of $2,103,091. And the projected fund balance change, for our last audit report, at June 30th, 2023, we had a general fund balance unassigned of $13,351,354. If the projections from last year are accurate, which is right now is looking like they are going to be very accurate, the general fund balance as of June 30th of 2024 coming up will be right at $10,700,000. And after you apply that projected $2,103,000 from the previous slide, that would leave us at a projected general fund balance of $8,629,903 as of June 30th of 2025. Any questions?
All right, so this time we're going to take questions from the board to Mr. Kaski.
Does the $8 million change that will have in fund balance still keep us in percentage-wise?
Yes, we would still be well over that number, sir. Until we get down into that sub-$6 million number, that's when it starts to become an issue.
Any other?
I'd like to see us reduce the ESR fund by 25%.
As, like we talked about last time, we are talking about absorbing those positions back into the general fund, but as of right now, those positions aren't actually included in that budget number. So those things are going to be absorbed by vacancy projections. Over the last few years, we've been averaging anywhere between 30 and 35 vacancies at the end of the year. So that's the savings that we're looking at paying for those additional positions.
Okay, thank you.
I think you kind of answered my question. You said the ESR salaries are not in this budget?
Yes, technically, they're not listed, they're not included in that total expenditure.
What is that number?
I actually have some other slides that I can pull up and show what it would look like to include everything. Do you want me to do that?
I wouldn't mind seeing that.
Okay. That is included in some of that revenue increase that you saw before. The revenue increases on the previous slides, it's included in their allocation. They're saying they're covering most of it. It's actually covered at probably 75 to 80% right now, is what we're projecting. But it is included in those revenue increases that I presented on the previous slide. Employees will see no increases. They'll see increases, they may be talking about a net, if they're, if they're, if they are saying that they're covering at 100%, basically what they're saying is, if it goes up by 11.8%, we're going to give you that 11.8% addition in your revenue. It's just not what we're seeing when we're doing the actual numbers. They're covering a large percentage of it, but just like most of the state allocations or the state mandates of new expenditures, we're seeing them promised to cover most, but they're not really covering the whole thing. Yes, it's going to go up by 11.8%. Yes, ma'am.
Any other question?
So off of your slide where you said we'll absorb?
Yes.
That's $1.1 million is a lot of money to absorb.
It is. The vacancy projections that we have over the last few years have been in the millions. We have had some vacancy issues, as you all well know. You know, when we have 30, 35 certified teacher vacancies at the end of the year, that's a big chunk of money that we're leaving out there that is technically saved if we don't cover it by some other means, whether it be a contracted employee or others. But if we're not covering them that way, then that is technically money that we're seeing as savings. But if you look at, if we budget as, this budget right here represents, if we were 100% staff, let's say every vacancy was filled by a certified teacher, this is what the budget would end up looking like once we absorb those, once we absorb those ESR funds. So that proposed expenditure budget actually goes to $77,517,836. You would actually see that fund balance needed to balance the budget of just over that $3.2 million number. And then our estimated general fund balance at 25 would move to just over $7.5 million. But like I said, those are things that, you know, if we budget it this way, that is not what I would project that number to be in reality at the end of the year. Like I said, that would be budgeting as if it's the quote-unquote "worst-case scenario." But the worst-case scenario is something that we should really plan for, because that's what we're shooting for. We're shooting for 100% filling of all the vacancies. So, you know, if that's the way we want to budget it, then that's what we can go with.
Yeah, I don't really think it's a question of how we fund it, or how it's funded, because we also don't believe that the fund balance, like you just said, will end up where it's going to end up. But I think there was a request to reduce it by 25%. That I presented to the two of you guys.
Yes, so let's just say if we budget it this way and reduce that expenditure, reduce that budget expenditure by 75%, then you're looking, you know, that's some $800,000 number that you're going to add to it, so you may subtract $300,000 off of that number there, or add $300,000 to that bottom-line number. It'd be somewhere in the 2.8 million usage of fund balance if we did that. But that's, again, you're just, you're kind of budgeting the numbers where you want them to be at that point. This would be the true budgeted numbers if we budgeted for every vacancy that we have right now, in addition to the 1.1 billion of ESR positions.
Any other questions? Good thing is, it's first reading, changed between now and second reading. All right, I entertain a motion for first reading.
So move.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wang, thank you, Ms. Birch. Any discussion? All in favor of the said motion, let me almost say an aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Two nays. So it passes. Okay. The nays would be Mr. Teal and Mr. Sims, is that correct? Ms. Coon, you got that? Thank you. All right, as we know, a lot can change between first reading and second reading, but that handles that until the next reading. Thank you, guys. Kevin, thank you for your work on the budget, you and Dr. Anderson both. We appreciate what you've done for it. At this time, we'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Hazard for our personnel report.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At this time, I would like to recommend the following exhibits for your approval, Exhibits A through G.
So move.
Motion been made by Teal, properly seconded by Dusa. Any discussion? All in favor of the said motion, let me almost say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. And it is unanimous.
Thank you.
So at this time, we'll turn it over to Dr. Anderson for a presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board and audience, tonight I want to, proud to announce the new principal of Sheraw High School, Mr. Harold Palmera. the new principal of Sheraw High School, Mr. Harold Palmera. Yes, sir. Let's give him a hand if he comes up. Mr. Palmera is a thirty-two-year, uh, veteran in, of education. He actually began his career in nineteen ninety-two as an English and, oh, boom, shah. Very good. English and French teacher in Columbia until two thousand and four. Uh, and he also was director of academic, uh, and director and academic coordinator in Columbia. The last thirteen years, uh, he's been here with us in Chesterfield County School District. Uh, he was a Spanish teacher at Sheraw High School, also was soccer coach amongst, uh, many other, uh, activities and, uh, things that he led there at the high school. He also, uh, the last two years served, has served as the assistant principal of Long Middle School. And, uh, it, it will be certainly, it's gonna be an honor to have him on board, part of the school administrative team, and, uh, he's gonna do a wonderful, wonderful job with us. Uh, is that your wife that you have with us tonight? His wife is with us tonight, Ms. Kelly Zvaga, did I pronounce that correctly? All right, and he, they also have two children together, uh, Andrus, Andrus and Emory, if I'm not mistaken, but, Mr. Palmera.
Congratulations, Mr. Chief. Congratulations, Mr. Palmera, we appreciate it. All right, at this time, we'll call on Ms. Stubbs for our curriculum report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Anderson, members of the board. Um, I'd like to highlight several areas in the curriculum report. Um, the first is part of early childhood and, um, Chesterfield County was part of an innovation grant from the State Department, which, um, allowed our kids, provided, um, books and activity books, um, for our 4K students. So, um, students received hardback books, um, and activities to take home and to transition to 5K. So, um, we're excited to be part of that. Um, at the high school level, our high school teachers have been working together, collaborating, um, to create, um, benchmarks for those EOCs. Um, and so, uh, this has been a year-long process. The teachers have been working together at the high schools, um, to create the benchmarks for Algebra I, U.S. History, English II, and Biology. Um, and next year, we will use those, um, three times a year so that teachers can, um, uh, work together to determine areas of strengths and, and, um, areas of, of need as they work with their students. Um, so that's part of, of next year's work. As part of the Fine Arts Program, um, there was a luncheon at Central High School. Um, forty-two arts completers and ten arts specialization seals of distinction, um, were recognized at that, at that event. The Technology and Curriculum Department are working together to, um, continue their work with, uh, digital resource and app vetting policy to ensure that our students, um, are, are receiving, um, the highest level of safety and privacy when it comes to, um, digital resources. All of our Title I schools are in the process of holding spring meetings or have already held those meetings. Um, the purpose of the meetings are to review the needs assessment and discuss ways to improve the Title I program. Stakeholders get the opportunity to, um, to, to revise the parent involvement policy and the school parent compact, and this is a meeting that's required at all of our Title I schools. Along that same line, principals updated their school renewal plans. Um, those were due in April and those have been, um, submitted to the State Department. Um, the district strategic plan and the school renewal plans establish priorities and prioritize efforts to focus on raising student achievement. Um, so that has been completing, uh, completed. And as all of you are very much aware, we are in the middle of our testing season. The SC Ready testing window opened on April twenty-ninth and will continue through May twenty-fourth. Um, most of our schools will, our schools will, will complete their scheduled testing on May sixteenth, um, and then, of course, we will have makeups as needed. And of course, began on April twenty-ninth and will continue to May twenty-fourth. The adult ed graduation is scheduled for June sixth at Chesterfield Ruby Middle School, so we would like to invite everyone to attend that event. And lastly, the special ed track and field day was held at Sheraw High School on April twenty-sixth, and it was co-sponsored by the Sheraw Rec Department. A hundred and ten of our students came to that special event, and the day started with a parade of athletes. Each class made a poster, um, to feature during the parade, and then students participated in various events such as football toss, softball throw, spoon race, soccer relay bowling, um, and, and several other events. And then the highlight was the Fun Town Activities, which included the bouncy houses, space painting and games. And then, of course, lunch and free snow cones was, was a big hit. Um, students from the health occupational classes from Sheraw High provided a, a first aid station for students, and then several of our businesses and individuals, um, allowed for the purchase of T-shirts and other expenses to help with the day. So it was very much enjoyed. Beautiful, beautiful weather that day. Any, any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Stubbs? Here none, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
All right, this time we'll turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Anderson, for his portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each year, we, um, we must bring, required to bring an authorization of federal programs director, and it has to be reflected in the minutes. So at this time, I would, my recommendations that we, you all authorize, uh, Title I, Title II, III, Title IV, and T- Title V's representative to be Dr. Candace Hoffman.
Our motion was made by Dusa, properly seconded by Birch. Any discussion? All in favor of the said motion, let the normal say an aye. All opposed, nay. And it is unanimous.
Thank you. All right, a few months ago, we actually, uh, brought together some of our stakeholders to go over and to revise, review, and to have, uh, some, some pretty deepened discussions about our student handbook and updating our student handbook. Dr. King facilitated that process, and I'm gonna, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. King to provide some highlights to you all, uh, as for our two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five student handbook.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Anderson, you know, Chair and the Board. Um, the Handbook Committee, as Dr. Anderson mentioned earlier, was revised a few months ago. Um, we had our stakeholders included, district level, district-level administration, principals, assistant principals, teachers, advisory council members, student representatives, and parents. So what we came, some of the updates that we are bringing to our student handbook for the upcoming school year is seat time requirement. And we're just keeping the parents informed more, so the more they know about the seat time requirement, they'll have it at their fingertips with the student handbook. Um, and those are outlined, I think I sent, everyone has a copy of the updated handbook. Um, but the seat time requirement is in there as well, so we updated it with the seat time requirement. Also, we updated our health room policy and procedures. Those updates are, um, from, are also in our upcoming handbook. Also, that, which includes in these health room policy and procedures parental responsibilities, medication policy, self-care and self-monitor care, school responsibilities, contacting parents, state immunization requirements, screenings, screening for early disease and disability detection. So some examples of what the seat time requirement, it talks about absences are counted per course, just goes into detail as far as what the seat time requirements are for our students so that our parents can stay informed. Also, we updated, we put our grading policies for each grade band in the new handbook. Also, our retest policy. Dress code for students based on goals and objectives, and those, after much discussion and speaking with other, um, school districts on how they handle it from the district level, the dress code objectives, uh, basically, you know, talk about providing a safe and secure environment, set the tone for serious, real-world, job-like approach to class, identify students and staff from visitors or trespassers, lessen destructive cultural and economic differences, promote students' self-concept, self-discipline and pride, reduce gang-type influences and behaviors, and bring dignity to classroom and workplace environment. So those are the objectives that we are driving for our particular, uh, dress code and also to just decrease classroom disruptions. So an example, um, of the grade bands, as far as the grading policy for each grade band, this is an example of our 4K through first and elementary, um, projections, and also teachers are required to have a minimum twelve grades in ELA and math and a minimum of six grades in science and social studies per quarter. So we have all those examples or that information in the handbook. Also, the Chesterfield County School District community believes that there is a relationship between student attire, classroom behavior, attitude, and achievement. So the main objective of this code of dress is to help provide guidelines for appropriate attire as students transition from the classroom environment to the world of work and other post-secondary settings. So, other updates to our handbook, we updated the breach of conduct pun, well, conduct punishment. For instance, we updated our offense number twenty-five, which is tobacco and vaping products, including vaping products without THC. And we included, notice you see it says C vaping policy, the vaping policy is also going to be in the student handbook. Also, offense thirty-nine, fighting at school or at any school sanctioned event, and you notice you see C fight initiative, the fight initiative is also going to be in our student handbook. Also, offense number forty-eight, gang attack, and we also added in or gang-related activity. And of course, with our gang attack, it goes back to our fight initiative as well. So you see that change is in there. Also, we had to add an additional one, offense fifty-one, possession, manufacture, and/or distributing child pornography. Also, we updated our manual with bus discipline specific to offenses. We updated our Title IX sexual harassment policy, that's also in our new handbook. The vaping policy is in our handbook, the fight initiative, table of contents, believe it or not, page numbers, that's in there as well. And we also included a QR code on the back of the handbook so parents can download it to their electronic devices. So on the back of the handbook, there will be a QR code that they can scan where they can also see the handbook, so it'll be at their fingertips. Questions?
All right, any questions? Any comments about the revisions? I know you, you've given prior to the meeting. Okay. Thanks, sir. Thank you for your work on it too, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving forward, we want to do a, uh, brief presentation on our upcoming penny sales tax renewal. Just give you a few moments for that to come up. There we go. And we're going to, gonna tag team a little bit, myself and Dr. King and Mr. Kasky as well, and, and we may call on a few that we have in the audience as well that, that's worked with us. But our upcoming sales tax renewal, uh, just a little information, as you know, um, whoever's clicking, go, go to click for me. Oh, well, as you know, uh, the, the, this penny sales tax, or the, the last penny sales tax that was passed, was actually passed in two thousand, and it resulted in the building of Edwards Elementary, Chesterfield Ruby Middle School, uh, New Heights Middle School, and Long Middle School. Many of the pro, what will, what will happen if our, uh, sales tax is not passed? Actually, it's gonna prolong the process of, of, of many items and many capital projects being done. One thing that we wanna make very, very clear is that on November fifth, when it is, when it's, and when it's on the ballot, it's not a question of will, uh, taxes increase. Taxes will not increase. This is a renewal, so there will be absolutely no tax increase at all. The amount of the total projects that we are going to present, uh, to you and this, uh, sales tax, as you can see at the bottom closely, it will be around eighty-eight million dollars. Okay? Between tomorrow and June tenth, uh, we're gonna be out there hitting the pavement, trying to share, uh, with the community, the, uh, the potential projects that we're gonna share with you all on this evening as well. We have until June tenth, uh, as it relates to timeline, to do that. After that, on June tenth, as you see, uh, we'll, we'll come back, present to you some of the items that we heard from the community, and then we will also, uh, work, work with our, um, referendum consultants. They'll be available on June tenth, at our June tenth board meeting as well, and then we'll ha, actually bring before you questions to actually be on the ballot for approval. Okay? Again, just working with the timeline, we'll also, uh, after May thirty-first, we'll have to establish a vote yes committee, and at, with that committee, uh, no one can be affiliated with the school district or, and we cannot use any district resources or funding during that time. Okay? Uh, August fifteenth is our deadline to submit referendum questions and projects to the county voting office. Our vote yes committee will be, again, out in the community, educating, promoting, advocating, and then on November fifth, our election day, we will, uh, hopefully get a yes, and we'll pu, we'll push forward with our, uh, plan. But tonight, we wanted to share, uh, some of the projects that we have, uh, developed, capital projects, whether we've developed, that can come under the renewal of the sales tax, and we're gonna start it off with Dr. King.
Yes, sir. So I know you all have heard me talk about the football fields a lot. We've had three separate meetings, so wanted to show you that a part of the referendum, uh, we're gonna be upgrading our football fields and our tracks for each one of our high schools. Chesterfield High School, of course, is getting an upgraded field and six-lane track. Sheraw High, upgraded field and six-lane track. Central High, upgraded football field and six-lane track, and also MacBee High, upgraded field and a separate eight-lane track. So that's a part of, these are the items that are high on our agenda with the referendum. Also, we realize that the Pason area is projected to grow tremendously over the next five to ten years, so we have a plan in place to, um, to counteract these expansions, and they're based upon the projected growth in the Pason area for the next five to ten years. So Petersburg Primary School, we're going to, the plan is to add additional classroom space, six to eight classrooms, and an expanded cafeteria at Petersburg. Pason Elementary School, additional classroom space, six to eight classrooms, as well as New Heights Middle School, additional space, adding six to eight classrooms. Also, in the Pason area, to combat the growth at Central High School, we are planning on the construction of a freshman academy on the campus of Central High School. So this particular campus will house only ninth-grade students. It will be a standalone school with its own cafeteria and gym. And as you can see in the picture, one of the locations that it could go is right here in the blue area out by Central High School. Okay? Also, new digital marquees for all of our schools. Um, these marquees will allow easier access to highlight the work of others, quick content updates at your fingertips, a dynamic display, and no more standing on ladders and changing out letters.
Right.
So that is a good thing. Also, we realized that the MacBee area is also expanding, and I think this was something that was on the docket years ago, but with COVID, the COVID outbreak, it was put on pause. But this referendum will overcome the funding restrictions that originally delayed the project. So what we have to address the expansion in the MacBee area is a MacBee high school expansion, which would be a new classroom wing of four to six new classrooms and two new science lab. Um, so the budget built in for outfitting labs with modern equipment. Also, MacBee Elementary School, we're adding additional classrooms, six to eight classrooms, and this will be added on to the end of the primary wing at MacBee Elementary School. Chesterfield High School, we are adding a Kate building, addition of standalone building for the Kate classroom additions. We also will have up to eight additional classrooms within. We also will have up to eight additional classrooms within that particular building, modern infrastructure to support multiple programs. Also, at Chesterfield High School, we have the weight room expansion, addition of approximately 3,000 square feet for a new weight room. It will connect directly to existing locker room area, and it makes the old weight room available for other athletic needs. And as you can see on the picture, this is where the actual expanded weight room will be. Sheraw High School, complete renovation of the existing gymnasium, expand the size to increase capacity, new gym flooring and new bleacher seating. So this is Sheraw High School. And also, we're all about safety and security, so we have safety upgrades. We have additional fencing that we are trying to do with our school buildings and athletic facilities throughout the district. We also have improved access control infrastructure through Sandhill's telephone company. This allows the district administration to monitor and track entry and exit at all main points of entry. Also, we have allotted within this particular referendum, general, for general renovations and repairs for all of our schools, and that general renovations can include items such as parking, HVAC, lighting, plumbing, electric, roofing, or other deferred maintenance needed throughout the district. As you can see, our project description and our project notes from each one, we have it broken down by area and by the project itself. I'll just give you a moment to look at it because I don't want to read all of it. But I've talked about it, okay? So some question and answers regarding the referendum. What is the timeframe on completing a specific project? So while we are still in the planning stage of these projects, we understand the importance of prioritizing the areas of higher needs. Projects that will directly impact the growth and safety of our students will be the ones that we address immediately. However, we aim to have all projects completed within the next five to 10 years. Which field, I know that's a hot topic, which field or track and field will be completed first? Based on the information that we got from the developer, each track and field will begin development at the same time. What order will marquees be installed at our schools? Schools that have inoperable digital marquees will be addressed first. However, given the scope of each project, it's likely that we can complete many of these installations simultaneously.
All right, any questions from board members? We do appreciate the work that you guys have put in on this as well.
Thank you. And again, between now and June 10th, we're definitely going to be soliciting your input as a board, and also the input from the community. And then, on June 10th, when we come back, it'll, the project presentation will reflect the input that we received, okay? All right, thank you, Dr. King, as well. Upcoming events, on May 16th, which is this Thursday, we have our retirement banquet, and that will be at 6:00 PM at Sheraw High School. On May 23rd, that's a half-day for students, so, May 24th as well, half-day for students. Then on May 25th, we will have our high school graduation. Sheraw High School, Chesterfield High School, and MacBee High School will begin their ceremonies at 8:30, and Central High School will begin at 9 o'clock AM. And then on May 27th is, we have Memorial. That concludes all of my remarks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Dr. Hazard, would you step back up to the podium, please? One thing I wanted to ask you about that I forgot to ask you in your presentation, so I'll just do it during my part. Could you tell us about the APEC program with Coker University? I know some of the people we approved were part of that program, and so I wanted you to explain that to the board.
Absolutely. So this year, we partnered with Coker University to be able to help some of our people that have a four-year degree, that are in a classified position to actually become certified to teach, that wish to teach. And currently, we have three that have signed up to be APEC fellows with Coker, and so they get a discounted rate, basically, of tuition, but they also receive a mentor that they will have within the school that they're assigned to, as well as a site supervisor. And the classes that they are taking through APEC for certification, 15 of those hours will go towards a master's in education as well. So they're getting a break there also with the education money piece. And basically, all we have to do is just apply them to people, and they will train them and send them right back to us, and they will sign a, an agreement with the district for a term that they will teach with us for so many years as being a part of the program once they conclude.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that.
Absolutely. You're welcome.
All right, board members, you've been given the 24-25 school board meeting schedule has been placed in your portal. Also, I want to remind you, August the 9th through the 11th is the SESBA School Law Conference in Charleston. Please get with Ms. Coon and let her know if you plan to attend. Also, June 10th, we'll remind everybody, will be our regular board meeting here at the Padmé Learning Center, as Dr. Anderson has already spoke about, beginning at 5:00 with the executive session and the meeting at 5:30. So at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Aye.
Motion made by Birch, properly seconded by Teal. Any discussion? All in favor of the said motion, let normal say an aye. All opposed, nay. And it is unanimous. Again, thank you so much for attending your school board meeting.